All right, good evening. It's 5:00 p.m. It's February 16, 2026. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. This time we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Josh Westrum, present.
Rich McDowell, present.
Leanne Arthel, present.
Matt Slaton, present.
Greg Oxworth, present.
Ah, Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. So under the authority of the Texas Government Code 551 Subchapter D, the board will now go into closed session at 5:01 p.m. to discuss 551.074 Personnel Matters and Public Officers, 551.082 Student and Employee Disciplinary Matter or Complaint, 551.072 Deliberation Regarding Real Property. All right, good evening. It's 5:00 p.m. It's February 16, 2026. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. This time we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona McDade, present.
Josh Westrum, present.
Rich McDowell, present.
Leanne Arthel, present.
Matt Slaton, present.
Greg Oxworth, present.
Ah, Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. So under the authority of the Texas Government Code 551 Subchapter D, the board will now go into closed session at 5:01 p.m. to discuss 551.074 Personnel Matters and Public Officers, 551.082 Student and Employee Disciplinary Matter or Complaint, 551.072 Deliberation Regarding Real Property.
All right, good evening. The time is 6:20 PM. We have returned from executive session. At this time, we have some guests from Hilltop Elementary that are going to lead us in our pledges of allegiance.
Thank you for waiting so patiently.
Hello, school board. Thank you. I'm Holly Williams, principal at Hilltop, and I have a variety of grade levels here that are going to say their names and what they like best about Hilltop. So come on up, guys.
Hi, my name is Travis Wilkinson. I'm in second grade. My favorite thing about Hilltop is the specials.
My name is Jack Payne. I'm in second grade, and my favorite part about Hilltop is all the different subjects.
Hello, my name is Keston Wagler, and I'm a fifth grader at Hilltop Elementary. And my favorite thing about this school is I was a late talker, and my pre-k teacher helped me to talk.
Hi, my name is Aradia Ajit. I'm in fourth grade. My favorite thing about Hilltop is that all the learning materials are fun and easy to set up.
Hi, I'm Bryson Griffin, and what I like about Hilltop is seeing my teachers.
Hi, my name is Avery Fernandez. I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite memory is the future because I made a lot of good memories with everybody.
Hi, my name is Eliana Comes, and my favorite thing about Hilltop is getting to see the smile on my teachers' faces.
My name is Kason, and I'm in first grade, and I like math.
My name is Sabrina Emmer. I'm in kindergarten, and I get a high five.
My name is Blake, and my favorite thing about Hilltop, my name is Kendall, my favorite thing about Hilltop is listening to the teacher.
My name is Naomi, and I'm in third grade, and my favorite thing about Hilltop is how the teachers help me and how they make class fun.
My name is Nishila, and I'm in third grade. My favorite thing about Hilltop is her eyes.
Hi, my name is Rashid Dev Arun, and I'm in fourth grade. What I like about Hilltop is that the teachers make me happy and they protect me.
My name is Vishwa Dev Arun, and I'm in fourth grade, and my favorite thing about Hilltop is that I feel more supported and less lonely.
Excellent, excellent. All right, we're going to have them lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you again to Hilltop for doing our pledges for us. At this time, we're going to have Mr. Hawksworth lead us in our opening prayer.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we come before you to lift up AISD, placing it under the covering of your protection and authority. We thank you for the privilege of educating the next generation in our community. We pray for the hearts and minds of every student in our district. We pray that they would excel in their studies and find their worth in you. We ask for a shield of protection over them physically, mentally, and spiritually against bullying, anxiety, and the pressures of this world. May they be bold to stand for the truth. We lift up the teachers, the coaches, and the administrators who serve our children daily. Grant them strength, patience, and a renewed passion for their calling. We pray that those who are believers would shine as a light, and that all educators would lead with integrity, compassion, and a dedication to academic excellence. I ask for wisdom and discernment for the board, superintendent, and district leaders. We ask for courage to uphold the standards that protect children and foster a safe, productive learning environment. We ask for a spirit of unity and peace to settle over our community, strengthening the partnership between parents and our schools. We pray for a revival and an appreciation for foundational values in our classrooms. We trust that you are in control, and we ask that you guide the future of this district for your glory. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Hawksworth. Okay, we've got some special recognition after our Hilltop clear-out. We're going to start with our football team. So Coach.
Coach Rogers?
Coach Rogers?
All right. Well, everybody smiles at me like that, didn't they?
Well, tell us what you love, and we might do that.
We just love this place. My name is Todd Rogers. It was awesome, that's good. I got a little teary-eyed while we go. So, our football team had a very successful year. One of the challenges when we come to this, you've seen these kids on the field and they wear a helmet. So, I'd like to start it all off, let them introduce themselves and some of their accomplishments, just so you can put a name with a face, and I'll tell you what position they play in. You'll realize, oh, yeah, I know who that guy is. So, we'll start off with Nathan Bruce.
Hello, my name's Nathaniel Bruce, and I was captain for the last two years of Argyle Football. I'm getting the chance to go to Air Force Academy to play football, as well as eventually join the military and fly fighter jets. I was first-team all-district and first-team all-area, and I was also second-team academic all-state. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Keegan Lawson. I'm getting the opportunity to play football at Henderson State University in Arkansas. I was first-team all-district, first-team all-state, and first-team all-area.
Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Grayson Peschel. I was first-team academic all-state, and next year, I will be attending Oklahoma State University to study finance.
Go folks, good job.
Hello, my name's Sager Zamso. I played a safety for the Argyle Eagles. I was a captain. Next year, I will be deciding, I'm deciding right now, to either go to UT or Texas A&amp;M to major in finance and do business. I was first-team all-area and first-team academic all-state.
I figure somebody up here probably has an opinion, whether it's gonna, I'm saying hook 'em. There's a few giggles.
I thought TCU was in there, man.
Just here for the kids.
I saw TCU.
Good job.
Hey, y'all, I'm Brett McDowell. I'm going to Arkansas, the University of Arkansas, next year to study economics, and then I'll go to law school afterwards. I was the starting nose guard this past year, and I was all-district honorable mention and second-team all-state academics.
Congratulations.
My name is Carter Stebbins. I was the pointer and kicker for this year's team. I will be attending University of Texas Permian Basin, and I will be for football, and I will be studying petroleum engineering. I was special teams M P and first-team all-district for kicking.
Congratulations.
Sager just announced he went down to UT Business School. So, how quickly that happened. That's awesome. Accomplishments, these kids played forty-two games in three years. With ten games on the schedule, that's quite the accomplishment. They were twenty-two and oh in district play. That's eight oh, eight oh, and six oh. So, they know a little bit about winning. They also, we just won our fourth consecutive five-eight district championship. So, twenty-nine, these guys were part of twenty-nine all-district players. And there's three, for only seniors, there's three first-team members on the academic all-state team, seven second-team members, and ten honorable mention. So, they do not get away from the academic part of it, which is one of our goals. That's good. But I appreciate the support. I think it's incredible, the support that we have from the top-down. I can't do it alone, I can't hire people alone. We have to have great parental support, good board support, and very motivated kids, and we have all the right ingredients. So, I appreciate, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Just remind everybody, we weren't able to celebrate them in December because they were still playing, which was an excellent reason not to celebrate them. So, thank you for coming back in February. Yep.
Can you let Leanne get a front, please?
We'll be in tomorrow. I did mention is two all-state laundry kids right there.
Yeah, very important, very important.
Talking well, excellent. Thank you. Oh, yes.
You gotta see if you're treated as well as the dog. All right, Chief?
I'm gonna go with, that's my cue.
That's your cue, Chief.
I'm sitting here looking at these guys, and I could use some of that size. We could use some of that size in our team. So, if they wanna change uniforms, bring 'em our way. Bring 'em our way. Come on up here, guys, come on, come on, come on, come on. Awesome. Well, this is super exciting. It's been kind of a work for the last several months, as we kind of, here we go, parade Canine Stitch here. I also have a few other men and women here, uniformed. Go ahead, bring him over here, he's not in the spotlight yet, not yet. And, yeah, actually, I do. Obviously, you know, it's great to have them here at the same time. Nobody commands a spotlight like that dog right there. But, we're gonna put him on hold, we're gonna pump the brakes just a little bit. We're gonna transition into these folks before we get into Canine Stitch here. So, now that the final piece of our puzzle is here, we felt that it was appropriate to bring our officers that we added this year to come and introduce them to the group formally, even though they've been here working on their campuses, but gives us an opportunity to kind of recognize them and their accomplishments and all their hard work that they've put in this year. So, we'll start right here in the middle. This is Officer Sabrina Blackwell. She is currently at Argyle West. She has, she comes to us with fourteen years of law enforcement experience, a heavy dose of I S D experience. She's been both at Mansfield I S D and Alito I S D as well. She has a real unique career path. So, in the middle of her law enforcement career, she decided to pull out of law enforcement and actually go into the classroom. And she taught for how many, how many years? Four years, yeah, four years, eighth-grade English. So, very interesting, before going back into law enforcement. So, as far as navigating the educational environment, stuff like that, very unique experience. We're very happy to have her, she's at Argyle West. So, then we'll transition over here to Officer Stephen Marks. Officer Stephen Marks, he is a parent in the district, which we hold very tightly there. He comes to us with twenty-four years of law enforcement experience, all with Texas D P S, is a Texas state trooper. If you name it, he's done it. And one of the things, it's very true, you take a look at his resume.
He's like, that law's broken, because Mr. Hawksworth's got a list.
You start looking at the certifications, you start looking at the training hours, different things. He brings a remarkable amount of experience and expertise to us. He is actively working on some of our policy creation, as well as kind of reconstruction. He's taking care of our training schedule as we go forward, and he's just a real unique piece to have with us. Awesome, awesome experience, we're very happy to have him. And then finally, over there, the great handler, Officer Preston Staber, Officer Staber. We pride him out of the hands of Little L P D. He was their canine, or one of their canine handlers over with Little L P D. I have to sit here and reiterate what Coach was saying about it takes support, not just from our community, but also from the board as well and upper administration. We came to you earlier this year, and we wanted to basically rebuild our police pay scale for this moment right here. Because we had an opportunity to go out and get somebody with great experience to be able to kind of head up this whole canine project for us, so we thank you for that. He has six years of experience in law enforcement, has a beautiful young family. They've already, right when he signed up, they were at every single home football game already, and big Argyle fans already, so we are very, very excited to have him. All right, now it's time, there he is, he's posing for everybody.
He's like, come on with it, let's go.
He is posing for everybody. So, here's the deal, let's take a minute to get to know Canine Stitch, okay? Canine Stitch, he is a year and a half, he is straight from Germany, okay? When he came over from Germany, he went into police canine training right away. So, that's essentially, he has been raised being trained to do this job right here. After a search throughout the country, we were able to identify him at a training kennel or a training center in West Lafayette, Indiana. And once we went out there and got eyes on him, I mean, we kind of knew through just communication with that trainer, but once we went out there and Officer Staber was able to get eyes on him, he said, this is the one, this is the one. He is a German shorthair pointer. Now, I know I did mention his name is Canine Stitch, but this is very important here, okay? We looked around, we thought it would be a great idea to allow the district to name our canine going forward. So, you might ask, well, you know, is that cruel, having a name, he already has a name Stitch, all that. I assure you, it's okay, our trainers are okay with it, it's fine. It's just, it's as easy as switching the name and then continuing to train on that name. So, but then again, if you like the name Stitch, you'll have an opportunity to put that in as a suggestion, and then we'll narrow it down. We'll have more information on that as kind of throughout probably the next week or two. There are going to naturally be a ton of questions regarding this program, a ton of questions. You're gonna see some of that information come out tonight, like frequently asked questions. Parents, we encourage you, board members, we encourage you to reach out to the police department with any questions you may have as far as, you know, his capabilities, what he does, how this benefits our community, our school community. It's important to know, he is going to, he is certified in narcotics, in narcotics detection. He is not a bite dog or an apprehension dog, that is not the case. We wanted to get a dog that was, that fit the personality of the district, and also kind of can push our mission forward as far as that proactive engagement piece. Again, more information on that coming. And then hopefully, in the very near future, he also will be certified in search and rescue and tracking to assist with, you know, some of those situations that might arise. So, I guess what we'll do now is we're gonna transition into swearing in the canine. Now, again, not many people know this, but as far as law enforcement goes, canine officers are considered police officers within the department. So, there is a formal swearing-in process that you have to go through, and we are gonna get a little stamp of his paw print right on that document so that we lock him in. And, yeah, we'll just continue there, so we'll get him right in front of this.
How's your German?
Right in the middle here, and we'll rock it out.
Hi, buddy.
You ready for this?
You gonna raise your paw? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Here we go, you don't hear me? Ah. And you don't have to repeat after me, he's already locked up. Here we go. I, Canine Stitch, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully serve as a police canine for the Argyle I S D Police Department in Denton County, Texas. I will use my training and instincts to assist my handler in detection of illegal narcotics and search and rescue operations, helping protect the students, staff, and community we serve. With loyalty, discipline, and courage, I will work beside my handler to support safety, build trust, and bring comfort to those in need. Together, we will stand ready to respond, to help, and to serve this great community, so help me God. Ladies and gentlemen, your newest addition.
Thank you. Hi, buddy.
You just gotta keep him away from socks.
Socks?
Yeah.
Shoe strings. No, it was a shoe string.
Shoe string.
Awesome, thank you.
That's a beautiful doll.
Wow, yes, oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you. Hello, Dr. Jordan. You are here to open up the public hearing, aren't you?
I am.
Excellent, okay.
All right, this opens the public hearing of the district annual report. So, the district annual report goes over the taper and a few other pieces of academic information. The taper can be found online through the T E A website. We are required to go over all eight sections of the annual report. So, starting off with what's on the cover page, as you will see in the red box, the district's accountability rating of an A, our special education determination status, which is meets requirements. And then our campus pages, you will also see the accountability rating and distinction designations. Before I go into those, I want to just give a little reminder about how a campus or district earns a distinction designation. So, campuses are put into a unique comparison group with forty other similar schools that T E A chooses. Campuses can earn six to seven determinations depending on the grade levels of those students. So, those are the areas of academic achievement and those four core areas. But it's more than just that, it's percentage masters, accelerated progress, and then some of those other testing requirements. There's also the top twenty-five percent when it comes to growth and closing the gaps, and that's coming straight from our accountability scores. And then the third area is post-secondary readiness. So, elementary can get that through the meets and masters on all subjects, all grade levels, in reading and math. And then the high school also takes into account those other areas listed there. So, taking a look at each one of our campuses, you'll see the blue boxes are the distinctions that were earned in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year by each one of those campuses. All of our campuses were an A or a B. And here's our secondary campuses there. Going further into section one, we'll be looking at mostly meets and masters. That's what we kind of focus on in our district, particularly with the masters. So, starting with third, fourth, and fifth grade, you'll see our reading and math scores for meets and masters. On the end is the percentage change for masters only. And so, you'll see that we have a lot of green, a lot of going up, and then fifth-grade math and science, no change in the percentage of masters. Please stop me at any point if you have a question. Sixth to eighth grade here. Anytime you see an area that has gone down, just know that we have dug in with campus administration to figure out why we're seeing a decrease, and they have a plan to address those decreases. And here's our high school as well. Moving on to the next section, still part of section one, participation, we're ninety-nine to one-hundred percent participation in every single area. E S L is reported separately, so you'll see the approaches meet to masters for the district and then for our E S L students. While we would love those to be the same, we know that these students are still mastering the English language, so we don't expect the numbers to be as high in those areas. All right, when we're looking at anything to do with the graduation profile, it is lagging data, so we'll be looking at twenty-three, twenty-four data. So, starting with attendance rate, you'll see that's for the district, ninety-six point two percent chronic absenteeism, up a tiny bit from last year. Annual drop rate is zero, but then our graduation rate is ninety-nine point four percent. So, that was two particular students that came to us in high school, repeating ninth grade. They were transfers in during high school. Our graduation profile, three hundred and forty-two graduates that year. I bring your attention down to the Foundation High School Program where it says D L A, that ninety-seven point four percent of our graduates graduate with distinguished level of achievement. C C M R is the next part, I'm gonna jump on over to how to get a C C M R point. So, you can get it by being college-ready in those areas through. So you, you can get it by being college-ready in those areas through some different assessments, through dual credit courses or advanced placement. You can also get CCMR points by college-ready and military enlistment. Students can have many of those areas, but they still only receive one point and they can't share their point. So, that particular group of students, seventy-nine point five percent of students met CCMR. We're actually looking at a much higher percentage this year because we, um, have a new tool to help our student, students earn CCMR. But you'll see there, um, how tha- that particular group of graduates earned their CCMR point. So that doesn't equal a hundred when you add all those up because they've earned it in many different ways. The one that had the biggest change was the IBC, that's industry-based certification. We'd never had more than, higher than five percent, and our high school's really done a great job getting our students through those certification programs. The last part of section one talks about the different student groups and staff information, so all that can be found as part of our taper through TEA. Moving on to section two is our fin- finance section, you've heard a lot from Liz over the years, so you know that we have an A-rating Superior Achievement, ninety-four. All of those reports can be found on our website. Accreditation is another area in section three, so you'll see the screenshot there that we are credited for this school year with Superior Achievement. You can see the areas that they take into account, academics, finance, that data integrity, and all those things listed there. Section four is our campus improvement plan, so you know, we went through the collaborative visioning. And we have a beautiful document, all of our campuses have their campus improvement plan posted on their website. There's actually four meetings, but three, three of those are the periodic checks and updates. The district improvement plan is also available on the website and goes through the same process of updating four times per year. Section five is the report on violent and criminal incidents, but there are no incidents to report. Section six is the post-secondary institution, so this is public information that can be found on the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So I have a couple of screenshots here from that website, and this tells us, um, you can see the titles there, the number of student graduates enrolled in Texas public schools. If you go down to the bottom, you'll find some that are not found, so they're only be able to track students that attend Texas public schools. And as you know, we have a lot of students that go to Arkansas, Oklahoma, different places. The chart on the right tells us some about their GPA, where they landed in those ranges there. HB three goals, these were created by the board in twenty-twenty-two, they have to be updated every five years. So we're almost to the point that we need to update those. So the first one is third grade math, followed by, I mean, third grade reading, followed by third grade math and CCMR. So right on track for math and CCMR, a little bit further than we, behind than we wanted to be for reading. And the glossary is available in both English and Spanish. That's the required section, but I'm gonna keep going with some of our ACT, SAT, and AP information. Starting off with the benchmark requirement, so these are the scores that are considered the college readiness. If a student achieves these scores, they should be ready for college. So you have twenty-two through twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five information found there, as well as the state and national averages. So we see a little bit of increase from twenty-four to twenty-five. Here's a five-year comparison. Not a lot of change, it's kind of like trying to change an IQ test, not easy. SAT summary report, so the ranges here are different, so those are the scores there that we're looking for for college readiness. The ones down on the bottom, the four-eighty and the five-thirty. So you'll see twenty-three through twenty-five there. So if you notice the very top line, the number of test takers, we started doing a school day administration so that every student can take the test. So we do see a little bit of a decrease in the total score, which we expected, but we still think the benefits of students being able to take the test in a place that they're comfortable outweighs that, and students who maybe aren't sure if they're gonna go to college or if they're gonna go to a college that requires this test, this gives them an opportunity to go ahead and take it. And we didn't see too much of a reduction in our overall score, from an eleven-ten to a ten-seventy-six. Just a little bit more information there. Something I did find interesting is the, met the benchmark, well above the state of Texas, but still trailing globally there. Opposite for the reading, so something for us to keep an eye on. So students submit their planned majors on the ACT and the SAT, and both of them had the same in, majors in common, which were business, engineering, things related to health science, technology, and about twenty percent were undecided. And where did they send their scores? So here is where they sent their scores, the top percentage from both of those tests were about the same, and these are the universities and they sent them to.
How many people sent to Auburn? There should be Alabama.
I'm not giving you names.
Just say Furba.
All right.
Before we get out of this, can I go, can I ask you a question about?
Sure.
The ACT, you don't need to go back.
Okay.
Um, you said, I think you said that the final score they took was used, so does it take in to account their super score or no?
For?
For the student's average test, their average, uh, test score?
Oh, yeah, so it's not the individual student's test score, it's the, the average of the class's score. Yes, is it their highest test, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, I mean, cause I know they'll take it multiple times.
Yes.
And then if they did well in the reading here and there, they could add them together.
I'm gonna double check that, Mr. Hawxworth, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I can't remember now if it's their highest test or if it's a particular, um, administration.
Well, I, I know that they're not, she's not worried about what the school accepts, she's talking about ACT.
Probably take them all, probably take both.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not sure what the snapshot window is where they gathered this information, and so that may not be their highest score depending on when they gathered. So let me, let me check into it and I'll let you know.
Just curious.
Yeah. Okay, now we're on to AP tests, you see, we had a big jump in the number of students who took AP tests. So that was really exciting, and the number exams, I mean, it didn't double, but it, it's a little big jump. So that took a lot of work on the part of our high school staff because they go and find these kids and make sure that they have done all the steps. And it's not easy, they have to make sure that they're enrolled properly on the, the online program, parents have to pay, it's all, it's a lot of pieces. So it's a lot of work on our counselors and I'm very appreciative for them doing that. And even though we had way more tests, our percentage of AP students with three pluses improved by three percentage points. So you can see, here's all the tests that they took, um, and the percentage of students that earned a three or higher. A three or higher is generally gonna get you college credit, it will get you college credit in a Texas school. But if they go outside of Texas, generally a three will also get them.
If it's not, if it's in their major, they might not.
True, yes. Yeah. So the next section.
Could you go back, well, now three screens, two screens, one more? Okay. Yeah, the, the AP students with scores of three plus.
Mm-hmm.
In twenty-four, there was nine hundred and seven, and in twenty-five, there was four hundred and fifteen.
Is that typo?
Is that?
I feel like it must be.
It has to be a typo.
Yeah.
Six hundred and eighty-four given.
There's a typo in there in twenty-four.
I'll get that corrected and send it back out to you. Okay, honor roll progress report, so continuing to make progress there, so how do we get on the honor roll? You can see there, um, the different, the three different areas and percentage who took an AP exam, who scored a three plus and took five or more AP exams. So, improving in all of those areas, and we've moved up from bronze to silver. All right, this concludes our public hearing, do you have any other questions for me? I have two things I need to report back. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Okay, we do not have anyone sign up for public forum, we'll go to donations. Okay. All right, for February twenty-twenty-six, donations, A, B, C fiscal year twenty-six, number twenty, or number seven, eighteen hundred and two dollars for all sports gym plyo mats. Uh, Jali Baja, uh, Baja, thirty dollars for Argyle West Elementary Stu- Stuko. Town of Argyle Police Department, fifteen hundred dollars for Road Ribbon Week. Argyle Business Association, eighteen hundred and twenty-five dollars for lunch loner accounts. Total February donations, five thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Does anyone have any questions on any of the consent items presented? Heard I entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
So move.
Dr. McDade motioned to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDade with the second, any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, you got construction.
So tonight we have Poe again to present the reports tonight, so I'm gonna let Jason Davis take the podium.
Good evening, Jason.
We don't have a very, uh, big audience tonight.
We did till the pledge left, then they all, they all left, we had a great audience.
Now, good evening, guys, um, I'll jump right in here. I think the thing that you guys wanna see the most is the stadium, I'm sure the question is, when are you gonna get to use it? So I know it's coming, we, uh, have a town walk starting next week, so, um, we continue to hit snags with them, and then we've had some very unique challenges with them. I think last week they come out and decided they weren't gonna do an inspection because we needed to add a bush that was not on the plan, so. Just ready to go. Bush has been added. You guys have seen a lot of these pictures, a lot of you have toured the stadium, so you're very aware of what it looks like, but it is gorgeous. Punch list, we're down to sixty items on the entire building. It's, it's ready to go, guys, we're just gonna get the city and, or the town to participate with us. I see, uh, that thing's gonna wrap up pretty quickly as well, you guys will probably be able to use that thing right around the same timeline now, actually. Um, the pictures that you're seeing here are a little bit, uh, old, cause this was done, you can see we're done with the gravel there. Can you show us what it looks like today? There it is today, so, um, there's been a lot done inside that building over the last eight to ten days. We got a fire inspection later this week, and, uh, we hope to be wrapping up finals inside there as well next week, so. Lots of progress, I think the main thing is, is just getting through our development inspections out there. Every time I turn around, I, I hear something I've never heard before, so.
And no lot, no, uh, it's a lot, no, uh, elevator. To be inspected.
So you, you're thinking next week, you said?
So we, we have a town walk scheduled for next week. It was something that we tried to get done on Friday, but, uh, Flyarounds went to a four-day work week, a lot of their people went to a four-day work week, so that's caused some challenges as well. Not everyone's available on Friday, so it's gonna have to go for Monday of next week. And then if we're able to accommodate anything that they come up with by, by Thursday, then we hope to get that signed off by next Thursday. We've had them out, we've had pre-walks, we've had, we went through every step that we possibly can to plan for anything they may come up with. But my expectation is, is that by the end of next week, we're, we're there.
Couple extra bushes in the back of the truck.
But that was, uh, that was a curveball that we weren't expecting, and I think the sad thing is, is we waited for a week to get an inspection on their schedule. And then when they came out, they said, oh, well, we can't do it because we've, we want this bush added back here on the back because they might build houses back there eventually. So, um, just some unique challenges that we've, that we've come, that we've come, we've encountered as we, uh, try to get this thing wrapped up, but I really do think we're there now.
When will the signage go on the outside of it?
It, it'll be late, it, the timeline that I've got right now is right at the beginning of the summer, so.
Did it just get back ordered or what happened?
Uh, just, it was just released in January, so we, we should add it there for graduation.
Because the. These towns, is anybody listening, these towns?
The towns saw the size of it and then didn't like.
Both towns.
So they changed it off the size, cause when we did the tour, I thought we said like twenty-four.
So the size was, the size was approved, and then we had another delay because they had to approve the color. And the color was something that held it up for a little bit longer.
We're talking about the A and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, we, that's gonna be.
The sign is in production right now, but no definite date, I think it's gonna be here pretty much, I don't think that's an issue.
So the parcel is done, I mean, we're, we're moving right along, guys, I think you guys should be able to, to start using the facility, the trainings are, are scheduled for, for next week. Everything's been wrapped up on the inside, we're just, uh, we're waiting for the town to give us the ability to open the gate. Any questions on the stadium?
Looks great.
Thank you. That's beautiful, guys, that, it's something to be proud of for sure. Just milestones, here's the middle school. There's another beautiful building, guys, this thing, this thing's gorgeous as well. You can see both sides there now, but, um, brick, we're, we're real close to being wrapped up with brick. Real soon, I think, we're there, probably got about three more weeks on, on wrapping up brick. You can see our temporary AC ducts running into the building. Lots of areas inside the building look like this right now. Moving right along. Interior machinery is flying. Duckworks almost wrapped up, I mean, we're painting, there's a gem, it's getting painted. Once again, our milestones here, we're, we're hoping to start no working casework, E P trim out, permanent power and gas connections that, that are, uh, we're working through as well. Any questions in regards to the middle school? There's just more milestone dates to talk about, our substantial completion, we're looking at July twenty-twenty-six and, and, uh, depending on when our, our easements are, are worked out, we may have to do a little bit of acceleration to get there, but, but we track that weekly and, and almost daily now with Jup, so understand what that looks like. It's on the same side, our, our elementary school. Utilities are going in. Uh, we hope to complete those in the next couple of weeks, maybe even just foundations be done. Dale Wood still show up.
Um, and if I worry?
So we're, we're happy with weeks from having still show up and be on site. Up there it is, will be done erecting still by May, we hope to be done with the major construction on that site when the middle school opens. So we're pushing heavily on the front side to see if we can get done just for traffic purposes. There won't go any further, I think that's the end of my presentation, any questions?
It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hold on now, I think. No, we still have a couple more reports. There you go.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
It's our first look at, um, that you're getting at our budget planning for next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yay. It's an ongoing process, right? So, um, and this is just a very high level, um, just look at it, we'll get into more detail on March second coming up. Um, just some information, you know, we're planning based on current law, there's not a legislative session this year, which helps, there's not a lot of guessing that, of what bill may or may not pass, and how that's gonna impact, um, impact funding. There are still a couple of things that we're watching, um, from last legislative session, uh, the hold harmless from Senate Bill two and twelve. Um, and then we're tracking the House fill two sped funding changes, the implementation of that. T E A is not set to release any information on that till later this spring, and it goes into effect for next fiscal year. So currently, we're using current law on that, uh, we may see some changes if we know enough information ahead of time, if not, it may be some changes we implement, um, next fiscal year. Um, we are planning some, uh, spring campus tours, Doctor Carpenter's gonna do a state of the district, and we're gonna tag onto that and give some budget information to each campus as well. Um, we're also gonna use data from the superintendent mid-year survey, uh, that went out to help with our budget process. And then we, uh, have our superintendent teacher advisory council, that brings input from all of the campus staff, has available input through their advisory council. And so those will all go into the budget planning. Um, we're gonna continue with the financial strategy team that we developed a couple of years ago, we're still look at budget efficiencies, um, any, any ways to refine those and make them better. Um, we are planning on, uh, bringing a compensation plan in June, Doctor Daniel will bring that in June for staff. Um, and I think that's something that we just wanna make sure that our staff hears, that is something that we're planning in that process, and we want them to know that we're aiming for that for next year. We're gonna continue our legisla- legislative advocacy plan, even though it's not a legislative session this year, it will ramp up very quickly the next year, so we always wanna keep in mind is, is, uh, what would be, uh, the best things to affect Argyle I S D. Um, and then we've got some board budget workshops planned, again, the first one March second, and then we have April eighth and May sixth. Um, this is just a little bit look at dates, um, again, budget development started several months ago for this, it's an ongoing process, depending on who's involved at certain times. Um, we've got our meeting tonight, campus and department budget planning, um, will ramp up here pretty quickly, we'll have our first workshop. Then we'll have a regular, uh, March meeting, we'll have our next then budget workshop. Um, around the April meeting, it may be a week or two after that, we'll get our first look at our property values for the next year, you'll get preliminary values from, um, D C A D. Then we'll turn right back around, have another bur- budget workshop, uh, have the May regular meeting, and then in June, uh, is when our compensation plan is set to come to, to the board for approval. July rolls around and we get certified values, uh, from the Denton, uh, Central Appraisal District, July twenty-fifth. Um, right after that, we do our calculations and publish our notice, uh, for a public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate. Your aim is to combine that with our August meeting, uh, assuming timelines all work out, that we can get that done. And so we would, um, hope to have the hearing to adopt the tax rate and the budget on August seventeenth regular meeting. So that, again, is just a quick look at the process and the dates and the timelines. Um, we'll get into a lot of the details starting March second, but y'all have any questions on that part of it? Alright, well, we look forward to discussing it with you then early March, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Austin, I'll just, if you'll just click, there's only like three slides, you'll just, that, go on to that second one and just hang there for a minute, cuz I'm gonna talk about our students and staff, so. Yes, it is a busy time, I think I said it every time we have a, a superintendent update, but we have just rolling off of our wrestling state champion competition this past weekend. So we had our girls were the regional champs this year as a team, and then we had both boys and girls competing in Houston this past weekend, so really proud of them, we had, um, some silver and bronze medalists, and then some fifth and sixth places, and the boys team was twelfth overall, and the girls was thirteenth overall at state, so congratulations to our wrestling program. We also had signing day back at the first Wednesday in February. We had fourteen Argyle High School seniors signing on to go, uh, continue on at the collegiate level. In fact, it was so many senior athletes that we had it in the arena, so, um, they moved to the arena, which was a great venue for that, and we celebrated several students, so congratulations to those students. We also had a first with a sponsorship for the event, and Uniball Pens had contacted us about sponsoring our, our signing day. Girls Basketball, they actually played tonight, they just beat Saginaw eighty-eight to twenty-two. So, um, round one check, and we'll be, we'll, going to round two either Thursday or Friday, um, so more information to come on that, so congratulations to our girls basketball program. We have, uh, Zoe Bukio is repeating, uh, the state U L's, uh, state swimming and diving championship this upcoming weekend, so she's headed down there. So looking forward to her competing, um, she is a repeat to the state meet. And then we also had a fantastic weekend celebrating our middle school students, um, their talents, so the sixth grade center musical, which was, I believe, Schoolhouse Rock Live, is that right? Um, and then we have the one-act play for the middle school, which is Storm in the Barn. And I just wanna recognize, uh, Team Turek for just a minute, as far as that goes. Uh, if you, if you don't know, um, our Mr. and Ms. Turek over at the middle school, they're incredible, and, you know, we, Winter Storm Fern just threw all sorts of challenges their way in more ways than one, and they just continued to pivot, um, I know we all kinda laugh at that word, and it's a friend's analogy, but I think they even had sweatshirts made, if I remember right, seeing those last week, and just very proud of them. They never wavered, um, they refused to let those obstacles get in front of them, and they still had it, made it, made it possible, and I know Argyle High School had a hand in that, but letting our students perform this past weekend, so. Congratulations to our students, um, incredible job with all of that, and just wanna thank them again for, uh, continuing to be so dedicated that, how they are. And then, um, we also had varsity Majestics, they were in competition last weekend. And we're best in category jazz, palm, first runner-up lyrical precision, small team state grand champions, supreme jazz routine, supreme palm routine, so we had lots of, uh, accolades coming out of that, and they were the first runner-up best of the best in the entire contest, so congratulations to our Majestics. We've had the Ar- Argyle High School Law Enforcement Team, so I know we saw and got to see our law enforcement, uh, district law enforcement, uh, team here, but we also have a high school team. And they went to the Skills, uh, Texas event, and they have qualified several students for the state meet there, I think we had ten that are headed to law enforcement for state. Very proud of them, we also had the, our first ever dirt digital divas, that's our, our girls, all girls computer programming competition team, and they've won some state accolades. And then our culinary team, which Ms. Greenwood leads, they also went to District Skills USA and have four students competing at state coming up, so. Programs all the way around continue to excel, and we're very proud of our students and staff. We had, uh, Argyle Junior High, or Argyle High School Junior, excuse me, Brandon Ong, he earned prestigious national recognition for National Society of High School Scholars. And then Wednesday, we went over for boardwalks, it was Doctor McDade and Mister Hawksworth, and Co-Center was there to present a five thousand dollar scholarship to Cooper Guild, so. We got to experience that and walked in, and they were there to give a, a check to him, so congratulations to Cooper on that scholarship. We also had our Denton County Spelling Bee participants, that was a first for us, we had a fourth grader from J R E and a seventh grader from the middle school, um, we had a, uh, let's see, at, at J R E, we had Ahhee Karth- uh, Karthe Key, and then we had Ri- Rhian Chaka, is that correct? Yeah, okay, very good. So, congratulations to Rhian and Adi, they did a great job, got to see them at the Denton County Spelling Bee. And then we've had three social studies teachers, um, on the state social studies teaks review and revision workshop, and that's a big deal, as they rewrite the social studies teaks, we've had Jenna Neal, Caroline Edwards, and Taylor Gilbreth, so. Appreciate them giving up their time, um, to go down to the, to the state level in Austin and be a part of that. And then all closeout celebrations with Counselors Week, um, we celebrated our incredible counselors across the district, thank you to our evil partners for helping support and recognize them, they work tirelessly to support our students both academically and emotionally, and they're really the rock behind all of our campuses, so thank you to our counselors for all that they have done. And, uh, that kinda rounds out our celebrations, I probably missed some, but that takes care of those. Then we have just an enrollment class size update, um, as always, we bring this each month, so you'll see there where we, projection for the year, where we are in the actuals as of today, as well as the class size ratios that we always want to continue showing, um, since we put, the board chose to put more, uh, opened up more classrooms last year for elementary, or for this year for elementary, and we continue to have several campuses and grade levels there in green, under the district average for class size ratios right now, um, at this point of the year, so. And then the final thing will just be some district updates. I just wanted to clarify on the winter storm miss school day waivers, so this way the state of Texas requires you to build in your, your district calendar each year, uh, enough minutes to cover two days' school days, or put in two days on your calendar. We actually do both, and once you, if you have the minutes built in for your first two days, then you're allowed to file waivers for the other days missed, of which the board approved, uh, tonight for us to file for those waivers. So if T E A accepts those school day waivers, then we will not have to use the two bad weather days that are on the calendar. We should know pretty quickly, uh, whether or not they accept those, and we will communicate accordingly, but right now, we do not expect to have to make up those bad weather days, since we had the two days worth of missed days built in. We also had, they have a May twenty twenty-six trustee election, um, it's officially, well, it will be officially canceled, once the board takes action on that, we will bring that to you March second to consider canceling the election as the filing date closed last Friday. Um, and we did not have, we have, uh, Ms. Artho in place two, who is, uh, seeking reelection, and she had no, no one file in her place, so congratulations. Ms. Artho will be back, and we'll swear her back in on May eighteenth, and then we had, um, newcomer trustee Justin, or newcomer Justin Ford, uh, has filed in place one, which, um, trustee Hawksworth is not seeking reelection, so that is the seat there, so it was unopposed. And then Frank Dixon, uh, filed in place three, which is Mr. Sam Slaton's place, that he did not seek reelection for, and so, um, it was unopposed. Is, oh, well. So, we will celebrate the two of you and honor, um, those, these longstanding and incredible trustees at the May eighteenth board meeting, as well as swearing in our, uh, new trustees, swearing in Ms. Artho again, um, and that will all take place on May eighteenth, and then this board here will actually sit at graduation as the board that has overseen the class of twenty twenty-six, so. Looking forward to that opportunity. We also have, um, mark your calendars, next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday, go to Chick-fil-A from four to seven, everybody. That fifteen percent of all sales go to our Special Olympics, so please mark your calendars, dinner is on Chick-fil-A, go see them next Tuesday. We also have, um, Doctor Jordan is, um, going to be doing a Web X for our families, uh, for A H S SOAR, which is our Student Options for Academic Readiness, our new virtual and hybrid program. So go get your dinner at Chick-fil-A, and then log online and, and get on the webinar for Doctor Jordan, and she will give you all the ins and outs of everything to expect with, um, Argyle High School SOAR program. We have the third annual band run, uh, coming, uh, who's the fastest trustee? Is it you, Mr. Slaton, or is that what we decided?
He's the only one that runs.
So, the one.
There is no chance that Sam Slaton beats me.
I think, I think your son is the one that. So, April eighteenth.
I'll go.
There we go. I think I hear a challenge, so, uh, we have that going on.
Ten K's over six miles, actually.
April eighteenth, and then the following weekend is the A E F Foundation Gala, and we're very excited, it's going to be held at Marty B.'s new venue at the Reserve. Uh, we also have February twenty-sixth, which is next Thursday, middle school, we have meet and greet with Ms. Wheeler. Uh, I, I, and we're excited about having that opportunity, the new principal Scott Gibson Middle School. And then we have Teacher of the Year process is underway, you've probably seen on social media, all the campuses have selected their five finalists, so we'll be excited to announce the prize parade on March twentieth. And then we also have, um, the last thing I have is the Town of Flyarament has, uh, has provided us their project agenda for considering their request for the site plan for the three hundred unit multifamily complex, which will be back here at, on the southern side, or to our south on this property, so starting to see some development on that side. There you go.
Good thing we got that bush planted.
Exactly. Exactly.
That one bush is gonna block three hundred apartments.
Thank you, Doctor Kerpen.
You're very welcome.
Alright, uh, we got some information only stuff?
Yes, we do, a couple items.
Okay, so for information only, these are purchases over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and you'll see there's three here presented, we've got fine arts technology, or two from technology, one from fine arts. Uh, fine arts are the band instruments, um, that are estimated to be needed for next year for A H S. Uh, we've got a maximum not to exceed of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, based on the current quotes, that does align with, uh, what the budget, the current budget is. Um, for that in the band department's budget. Uh, for the first technology line item, it's, uh, for interactive displays, this is out of the twenty twenty-five bond. And this is for, um, the displays that are in the classrooms, so it's gonna replace the displays at West and at High School, and part of the sixth grade center. Then it's gonna replace and install wall-mounted at Hilltop Elementary and Argyle Middle School. If y'all remember, when we first originally bought these and got them, they are mounted on a cart rather than on the wall, so we're gonna take the two that are still remaining on the cart and actually put those on the wall, um, and get them just like the other campuses when we do replace those. Um, the second technology line item are student Chromebooks, that's out of the twenty twenty-four technology bond. Um, this is in line with our replacement schedule for the one-to-one devices, it's a refresh, refresh cycle for sixth and ninth grades, as well as some additional, uh, projected student growth, so. We like to have some on hand so that when student grow, you know, additional students show up to enroll, we aren't waiting on an order for them to come in, we actually have devices on hand to, to issue out to them at that time. Um, so again, this is M and O budget, twenty twenty-five bond and twenty twenty-four bond items, do you have any questions over those? Alright, thank you.
Good evening. This is the, uh, staffing plan that we, um, are presenting tonight for information only, this is for the twenty-sixth, twenty-second school year. We'll bring this agenda item back on March the second at the budget workshop, um, for action. Our hope is to post new positions as soon as possible to attract the best applicants. Can you pull up the, um? Sure. We've been meeting over, uh, the past month with principals and directors to determine staffing, staffing needs for the next school year. Uh, many meetings, many master schedules being presented and hashed out and cleaned up and made as efficient as possible. Ms. Lumston and Ms. Wheeler are here to do that presentation, do y'all wanna do that?
No.
I think I've sat through it probably at least since October, we've been meeting, um, but many times, and it's very, when you're opening a new middle school and you're basically taking our sixth grade center and middle school and spreading it into three different campuses, there's a, a lot of, um, pieces that need to get put together, and they spent a lot of time working on that, so.
Yes, they did. And it's, and I think one of the things that a lot of people don't recognize is the complications with the teaching certi- the certifications, and all the places you have to, it's a little bit different than when you open elementaries, when they're more of a generalist type certification, so they have, they've put in a lot of time with that, and we do appreciate the level of detail they put into that, cuz it helped get everything fine tuned, so thank you.
So, what we just decided to do is we're starting with what we're calling a phase one. Meaning that there will be a phase two and possibly a phase three, um, presentation of positions for next school year. Phase one, um, really focused on, it focused on basic needs that we think that we're gonna need for next school year to get started. Um, with a big focus on open, opening up Gibson Middle School. So, we started this process a few months ago, staff in grades six to eight, six, sixth to eighth grade current staff were given a transfer form to fill out. And to determine where they wanted to work next school year. And some of those requests were able to be filled, and some of them were not. Just because of the number of positions that were gonna be left at Argyle Middle School compared to, um, Gibson Middle School. And we've had, not me. And we've had, not me, they've had conversations with those staff members today about those requests and whether their transfer was either met or not met. So principals reviewed the requests, they made moves, notified staff, and once that was completed, we looked at the remaining openings. Um, and the needed positions in grades six to eight. So when we were looking at this, we weren't looking at three schools, we were looking, we started with, what do we have in grades six to eight? With our, and what can we do with our current staff to fill those needs? We filled those needs with the transfers and now we have what's left for those three campuses. And so to maintain programs at both middle schools next year, we're, we are requesting sixteen teaching positions. Which are broken down by campus on the spreadsheet that's up on the screen. If you look at line eighteen, uh, sorry. Line, starting on line nine, you'll see the name of the position. That's not, that is not the. Okay, that's not the spreadsheet, I don't think that it was, there was an updated version of this.
No, that should be right.
Oh, yes, it is, you're right, sorry, I saw the art and color guard because we weren't very specific on the rest of them.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so there's sixteen total positions for grades six to eight, you can see how they're broken down there.
Do you wanna talk real quick about the elementary?
Oh, yeah, we've got more, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So that was the bulk, I mean, that's what we spent most of our time on. The rest of the positions were mostly a formula based on Tasby recommendations. So due to the limited class sizes, um, number of class spaces that we have in the elementaries. And we really are trying to avoid port, avoid portables next school year. Can you scroll up a little bit, please?
Row nine.
The other way. We plan to add, would like to add two teachers next year at Argyle West. And the remaining campus, campuses will not add any new staff. Class sizes might go up a little bit, but there is not space, but we can make it work.
And they did talk to them about, you know, creating space, whether it be in the music or the art classroom and art and music teachers floating. But that is not the choice that the campuses wanted to make, they wanna keep those teachers in their classrooms for their space, for their specials. Um, which, and so they had to, you know, had to kinda work through that, but there, there are no classrooms left. So every classroom will be full and those are the two classrooms that we have available to, to add to.
And I met with those principals also and it was a very quick and easy conversation, I mean, that's, they had already been talking about this and that is what they, that was their desire. Um, was to not have those, like what Dr. Parker said, have those art and music move around from classroom to classroom.
Is, is the intention then, assuming when we open up, uh, Ball Elementary, that we go, try to go back to the staffing?
That'll provide a lot of relief. And that's, and they, and they realize that this is a one-year kind of crunch time.
And the good news is there's, there's, we're still in the eighteen to nineteen kind of average anyway. So we've, we've got room, I mean, we've got, we're not sitting at twenty-two right now, so we've, we've got some, some room there, um, for, for some growth.
And then at Argyle High School, we plan to add five teaching positions based on the expected growth. Special programs, specifically our special education students, that, um, our numbers are increasing there as well. Which is why you'll see additional staff requests that begin on line twenty-eight. And then I know I'm jumping around, but back on line eighteen. These are non-teaching positions, but these are office-type positions, not adminis, well, there is an administrator position, but clerical staff, a police officer, ISS aide, nurse counselor, these are all for, um, Gibson Middle School. And then finally, as we grow, our bus routes will be increasing, so we would like to add ten additional bus drivers for next school year.
With the buses?
Yes.
So the, um, go back up just a little bit, the high school. Line fif, I guess fifteen?
Yes.
So when we look at the following year, splitting schools, right?
Then we're gonna go through this whole process again with.
It'll be a lot, a lot like this. The good news is they're getting a lot of practice right now.
Well, and I guess my question would be, obviously, we're gonna assumidly grow between now and then, um, at that level. So doing the, these five teachers now.
Yes.
It's not gonna be more than what we ultimately will need, I mean, we're gonna use those five teachers.
Well, the, by doing the formula, it shows ten right now. So we're only bringing five right now until we, they finish up course, course selections and all of that kinda stuff, to see kinda where it lands. But the formula itself shows they need ten. Next year.
And if we're looking at a phase two of this, is that determined by some of the things that are still outstanding from your end, please?
No, it's just, we more or less just knew we needed to, the principals requested that these go first, so they could get them, they could start hiring, they could start interviewing. And we knew that it would be March before we could get them approved, so we tried to break them in to, to chunks. So we went classroom first.
Gotcha.
And what it was gonna take to get Gibson going, so she could get, started on interviewing, she's got a lot to do. And then we'll come back with some other departmental type things and campus, campus requests that aren't on here.
So these are time-sensitive?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to get a head start on, you know, the best applicants.
And I take it y'all are, with this, the stress that the elementary schools may be under next year in terms of capacity. That y'all are, that later on, y'all may look at ways that you can support those campuses. Maybe without adding additional camp, you know, classrooms, but in terms of staffing-wise, we may see something like that come down.
Correct, and we actually have that in another phase.
The principals, the principals have helped, kind of been helping create what that would potentially look like.
And that could look different on each of the campuses, I'm sure.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, possibly.
Is there, I've seen in the past that we've done comparisons, I saw the ten bus drivers, I know we've done it for various other positions where we compare ourselves, um, on a pay scale with other surrounding districts or our cohort that we create for ourselves, that we feel like we compete with in various things. Have we, have we done that for campus administration? Principals, assistant principals, I haven't.
No.
No, with sal, salaries, yes. Actually, I had my first meeting with, um, about compensation today. And yes, we do look at, we look at all pay grades, everything from.
That one I don't, I've, I've, I've slept a whole bunch, but.
No, we, we do.
So can we, can we put that in the, the discussions for the budget planning, I'd just like to see it. Thank you.
You sure can.
Okay, like I said, this is information, be back on March second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is budget amendment two, uh, that you saw last month for information. Um, it does not change, um, anything on the revenue side yet, it changed, it, this focuses again on expenditures. Uh, there is one slight difference since, uh, we presented this to you last month. There's one more, um, campus function change that I included, it was moving, uh, request to move five hundred dollars between function thirteen and thirty-one. And since it was a net zero budget change, we went ahead and included that on here. So if you do compare this to last month, you'll notice that, that change there. But just as a reminder, uh, for the main changes here under curriculum, we're preparing for math academies, um, and some required training this summer. Um, we're looking at, under, um, campus administration, we're looking at some additional, um, training for campus staff. Uh, there was one FTE there that was approved last month, um, for a dean of students. Under, um, security, it is a vehicle replacement and, um, additional cameras that were requested. And some, um, campus, some cameras that we had to put in and also some budget to estimate any cameras that we may need for the remainder of the year. So, um, total of three hundred and six thousand dollars. This still leaves us with a net, um, surplus budget of a little over four hundred thousand dollars. We are working on a budget amendment three right now. Um, plan to bring that to you in March as information, and that one will focus a little more on revenue. Looking at our first semester data, as well as our property values, and may even go up and include the fourth to sixth weeks as well. So working on that and that'll, that'll bring that back to you at that point in time.
Can you remind me, the FTE is, right now it's on one campus, right?
Was it one campus? Yes. Any other questions on there?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve action item twelve A as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton motion to approve, do I have a second? Mr. Hawksworth with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No changes to the calendar that was proposed to you last month, option one. Just a couple of things to note is that, yes, we do have the two days built in, the minutes, sorry, two days worth of minutes plus the two weather days. And as a side note, we are off on President's Day.
Which happens to be the same Monday as the, yeah.
The Super Bowl is, well, times just gonna be.
Yeah, so it's the same Monday.
It is the same Monday next year.
Do you have any questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve action item twelve B as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Hawksworth motion to approve, do I have a second? Mrs. Leanne Artho with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
This is update one twenty-six that was presented last month, these are the policy change, changes recommended by Tasby with tweaks that were provided by us to customize.
And we also had one that you had to bring in due to virtual and hybrid learning, the EIC. Okay. That's to address, uh, classroom, or, uh, GPA weighting on, unless the course is taken through the districts, yeah, okay.
Does anyone have any further questions for Dr. Daniel? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve action item twelve C as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rich McDowell with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Dr. Daniel.
Thank you.
Ready?
All right, we're ready.
Okay, uh, so tonight, I'm bringing you, um, for action, uh, approval for material, uh, construction material testing services related to our four oh seven shoulder improvements, which were not planned in the original budget, so this was something that, uh, Tech Dot has added. They determined that we had to rebuild those shoulders in front of the middle school and elementary school on four oh seven. So we've gotta do the material testing on that to satisfy Tech Dot requirements, uh, so we're bringing you this not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand dollars for Geotex. Uh, in order to conduct that testing, they are, the testing lab currently doing all the work for us on middle school and elementary school.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Cohen? Uh, entertain a motion to approve action item twelve D as presented.
So moved.
Dr. McDavid, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Leanne Artho with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's hit it, let's do the next one.
Let's hit it. Next one I've got for you is, uh, for action on our construction manager at risk for the baseball soft complex and the connector hallway, both here at the high school campus. So after a two-step process, evaluating qualifications, uh, and fees on those that were select, selected to submit step two of the proposal solicitation. Uh, and an interview process with, uh, four firms, uh, actually, one, one that we identified had declined, so it was actually three. Uh, but Pogue was ranked highest, scored highest after all those considerations, so we entered into negotiations with them. And tonight, this is the result of those negotiations that we're bringing to you. Budget impact initially is thirty thousand dollars for pre-construction services fee on those two projects. Uh, the remaining part of that being a percentage-based fee, uh, based on the cost of work, which will be determined at the time we set the GMP on those projects in a few months.
Can you remind me the architect on the connector?
The connector hall is Corrin. And the other project is a PBK project.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add this, having sat, sat in on the, the interviews and the scoring, I mean, one of the things that stands out about Pogue is and not only the good work that they've done for our district and, and, uh, but the fact that they've been on this site. I mean, these, these two projects are on the same site that they just worked on for the stadium and the IAC. And as, you know, as I explained earlier, there's, there's a, uh, there's a learning curve as it relates to developing in Flower Mound. And it would, given their recent history, it's hard to overlook that experience and the importance of, you know, having just gone through that. And so I'm hopeful that some of the things that we've heard about earlier today, um, don't come, come up on this project and we're ma, we able to avoid them. So just wanted to share that with y'all as one of the considerations that was going through my mind as it related to the construction manager for this project.
Any other questions for Mr. Cohen or pontifications? Entertained a motion to approve action item twelve E as presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wester, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hawksworth with a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Okay, so this last item is, uh, for the board to consider, discuss and consider approval of a resolution authorizing the acquisition by purchase or eminent domain, if necessary, for the two utility easements for public purpose providing electric and gas service to district property. Middle, uh, Gibson Middle School, um, and Michael Ball Elementary, public purpose of providing, uh, for across the property currently owned by the Well Community Church of Argyle. So that's, description is there, um, and so that is a conversation for the board to have at this time.
Well, I'll say that, um, I'm generally aware that considerable effort has been made to try to, um, acquire these easements. And, uh, you know, it's just one of these things where, um, so far, hasn't been able to, to get them acquired. And for the benefit of anybody that's listening. My understanding is, is that there is a, there's an electric connection and a gas connection that is roughly ten feet off our property line.
Let Jeff come up here so he can.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's like, if I'm looking at that podium, and I'm standing on the school site on four oh seven, and I'm looking at the podium. It's probably about half that distance.
That's correct.
And it's like, I can see that little gas line right there, and I can see that little electric connection right there. And we just need to kine to it. But we've been unable to. But we've been unable to acquire the right from the Whale Church to, to get to that little spot.
That's correct.
And so, you know, sometimes these things are unfortunate, but sometimes they're, they are necessary when you, when you need to get gas and power to a school building and facility. And so the only thing I would recommend, as I read this resolution, that there are, yes, two connections. I think they total, one of them is a, is it 110 square feet?
130.
130.
130 square feet, which, you know, and the other one's 90 square feet.
97.
I mean, we have area rugs bigger than that. But one of the things I would recommend that we, in our resolution that we add, is that I think the easement, there may be construction, temporary construction easements that are in the document, and so I would recommend that when we, if, if we were to approve this resolution, that in addition to the two utility easements that we're going, that we authorize the acquisition of two temporary construction easements as, as necessary for, for these projects. Because they may need to be outside the 10 feet to make the connection temporarily, so.
I think it's important, you mentioned that a lot of time and discussions have been had in this by Jeff and a lot of district people, a lot of board members, lots of discussions trying to get this worked out. In fact, we did have an agreement at one point, which we shared back with them, the documents to execute that agreement, and it was then returned back and changed. So, we have made every possible effort to get this done in a timely manner, in a responsible manner with taxpayer dollars, and it has proven to be incredibly challenging. So, I, I just want everybody to understand that we don't take this lightly. You know, we, we were partnered for the Whale Church for years as they used our then-high school 377 campus, made their services.
Started.
Yeah, started there. So, they've, they've been a great partner. We just can't seem to get on the same page on this one. So, we don't take this step lightly, but it is where we are, so.
And so I remain, even if you pass the resolution, I mean, this resolution is to, you know, authorize the purchase or eminent domain, so I mean, you know, hopefully to continue dialogue that, but with, the reality of it is we just, we don't have any more time.
We're running out of time.
I mean, we're, we're running out of time. And I mean, we're, it's 2026, school's going to open up later this fall, we got to pass this resolution.
We still have no power and gas.
Or assume neutral paths, again.
Just so everybody's clear, this just allows us to continue going down this path, not that we want this to be the end result, but it's the next step, first step in this process. If we need to do that, then we've gone down that road. Hopefully, we can reach an agreement outside of this process.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be optimal. School has to have power, has to have gas, can't operate without it, so.
That's right.
Yeah, we'd love to settle this. We thought we had it to the finish line, so, but we have to keep exhausting every effort we can to make sure that we can open these schools, this school particularly right now, and ultimately the elementary next to it for the students of this district, so.
So Sam, my, my recommendation, I guess I would maybe read the resolution and add the wording, and then, I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion, I guess, with the additional wording. I'll shoot. If y'all are ready, if discussions are.
Go for it.
All right, so I would make the motion to approve a resolution authorizing the acquisition by purchase or eminent domain if necessary to utility easements and two temporary construction easements for the public purpose of providing electric and gas service to the district property across the property currently owned by the Whale Community Church of Argyle, being more particularly described as follows. A 9.990 tract of land situated in the Patrick Rock Survey abstract number 1063, town of Argyle, Denton County, Texas, and being a part of Lot 1, Block A, James P. Heath addition, in addition to the town of Argyle, Denton County, Texas, and described as tract C and the special warranty D from HTM Argyle Land LLC to the Whale Community Church of Argyle, recorded in document number 2019-49287 of the real property records of Denton County, Texas.
All right. Mr. Westphal's made a motion to approve 12F with the spoken amendments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hawkesworth with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The time is 7:54 PM. We are.